It's now about time for the Southern County Board to come to order. Ben Cross will come and say his pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the right of our United States of America, to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, in the name of this law, to the liberty and justice for all.
All right. We need to approve the agenda. Do I have a recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve it.
Do I have a motion to that effect? I make that motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. First time. Thank you. The president's report's next, Mr. Alston.
Thank you, Madam President. I've got a few items this afternoon. First of all, we've got an early graduation request for executive session that I'll ask the board to consider there. Also, in your FYI folder, you'll see information about our recent federal progress audit, our federal program's been excellent job in that. And I would like to introduce our director of federal programs, Carol Ingram. She's here, and I want to give her a chance to introduce her team that worked so far on the task.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, you're outside of my director. Jordan Eisenhow, David Clark, Damian Jones, David Clark, Jennifer White, David Clark, Hannah, Brittany, and Beth Riley, those are the three here, she's my boss.
Thank you.
I'll send her her team in today because a lot of time and effort went into the federal progress audit, and thank y'all for all the work y'all did on this.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'll ask Principal Duane Case of Fernando High School, please come forward. We have coaches with special recognition who'd like to bring in.
Thank you, Mr. Alston, and board members. I'm glad to be here today, and this has been a long time coming. This is actually had was delayed because of, you know what? And so we try not to say anymore, but we're here to recognize Coach Logan Clark. He was considered the Coach of the Year for Cross Country. And Coach Clark is, he grew up in Fernando and graduated from Fernando High School in 2006, I call him. He began, that's how old I am, he began working and coaching in Southern County schools in 2013 in South Haven High School. I've graduated from the University of Mississippi, and this is ninth year to coach distance running in the county. And he's also coached tennis and track and field, and he currently coaches soccer and cross country at Fernando High School. He moved to Fernando High School in 2017 and coached cross country, running, and track and field. And over the past four years, he has taken our program to new heights. Fernando High School girls have been state runner-up twice in 6A and state champion once. And the boys have gone from a top-20 team to a top-10 team in 6A, so he's moved them immensely. And in this current season, our girls rank number one in all divisions and all classifications. And they're, they run, they run 3.1 mile every time, it's a 5K, and our girls are running in like 20 minutes an average for all the girls running. So they're, they're getting after it. And our boys are running about 18, so they're ranked eighth in 6A. And Coach Clark has a lot of energy. I don't know if he's gonna do it when he gets older, but he goes out there and practices soccer, and then he runs with, he runs with cross country then. And he's kind of their pace setter, and so, and has done a tremendous job. My own child runs cross country, and he only runs cross country because of Coach Clark, because my wife and I run, and he never runs with us. And so Coach Clark gets out there and runs with them, and so his philosophy on that, because everybody asks me, why doesn't he run with them all the time? But he says, train as hard as you expect your athletes to train, and they will follow you to the finish line happily. And so he's leading that example for sure, and he's built a juggernaut in especially girls' cross country, trying to get the boys there as well. But very proud of him, and not only is he a great coach, he's a great English teacher as well, and inspiring a new generation. Just, he probably told me to throw that in. This time, I'd like Coach Logan Clark to come.
The board is the 2019-20 state Coach of the Year given by the Mississippi High School Executive Sessions.
Congratulations. Thanks. Great job.
Congratulations, Coach. Right, this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Brian Williams, please come forward, Principal of Southern Central Middle School. There is our teacher spotlight for-
Good afternoon. This afternoon, I have Rachel Janey with me, she's a sixth grade math teacher at Southern Central Middle School. She's gonna give you just a quick glimpse of what she does in her classroom. Everything she does is amazing. So you'll get to see, it's not the traditional math classroom, she has a lot of great activities and great ideas that she instilled in that classroom.
My name is Rachel Janey, and I do teach sixth grade math, and so it's just- So we had to kind of come up with some ideas to keep our students excited and engaged to come to math. This is what we typically think of a math classroom. Like, all the ways that we can get out of going to math, how long is this gonna last? Do we have to do the same thing every single day? So what we did was, we found our game changer in classroom transformations. It's just basically dress up in the classroom, find an idea to excite the kids to come to class. Our very first transformation that we did was in 2017, where we changed our classroom into a relax program. Our kids needed, got pissed with, very decimal instructions in particular, and we found this great idea, and we just dressed it all up. They were so excited, they didn't know what was happening. They were begging kids to next class to tell them what they were gonna do. They're like, what's happening in the classroom? And so they were so excited, we just passed. Once we saw that, we knew we had found something awesome, and we had to keep going. So our next year, we added one more activity, which was my favorite, it's the hospital. Huge racing anatomy fan, so it went right along. Our SRO officer gets involved, we got him, he convinced, he got the kid back one, and he took them out, took them to the car, they got to play on the radio, they ran, they ran around in the car. Super fun, lots of engagement, lots of excitement. So we found this activity on Instagram, I was sitting in there one night and running through, and found this activity, I was like, how can we get this to our kids? Like, order of operations, perfect. Here we go. So we took it, we ran with it, we converted our whole room into operating rooms. And the kids solved four surgeries to solve the puzzle, really. And when they got a surgery correct, they got a Band-Aid for their little man. So it was a successful surgery. At the time, I had was an engineer at Simpson FU, and he, one of the surgeries was knee surgery, and he actually designed knee replacements. So I got him to bring in all of those parts for knee surgery and the tools for knee surgery, so not only were we teaching math, we're fighting them about careers too hard.
Hey, my name is Jennifer White, and I was still, I was just here in the sixth grade class, and I wanted to tell them that operations was all crazy, activities were really very busy, experience, getting better at math, so I really liked it all, brought up a brand new, and they were helping one of the kids, uh, she was great on the math class, and gave me six grades.
So our next activity that we found was, a couple years ago, Halloween happened to fall on a Thursday, and we're like, oh, Lord have mercy, and I was pretty sure it was a full moon, and I was like, how in the world are we gonna teach on Thursday, then come back on Friday after they have been out trick or treating all night? So when you can't beat them, you gotta join them. And we came up with six activities that were all Halloween themed, and they had a collapse, decorated. They did fear factor activities where they dug in a box that had workies in it that they didn't know it was, and they were pulling out tap cards, working on where, in a regular setting, you would have the poor teachers to get them to do it, but this setting, they were so excited, they didn't even show how much work they did actually in this setting. They went around and taught each of those stations for two days, and you would have never gotten a Halloween, because those kids worked so hard. They were ready to come back the next day, they begged me not to take it, they all, she was like, please, please, tell me, I wanna do this tour. So I knew I was doing something right. That's just been going on the station. Worked that. And then our last session that we do for the end of the year, wrapping up, getting ready for state tests, again, saw this on Instagram, grabbed it, made it our own, how in the world can we incorporate glow games to our curriculum? End of the year, they gotta get ready for their state test, why not make them happy, engage them, get them ready to take that test? So we put, we just took a set of 30 questions, broke it up into six games, where they played cornhole, they played basketball, if they got a question right, they got to play these games. So again, super, super engaging, lots of excitement. This one was a little bit special to me, because I had a sixth grade student who is now sophomore in college come back, and she wanted to help me run these games. She's going to school to be a teacher. So I only got to teach her at sixth grade, and then I'm helping her with phones. So this is then a glow game, they went around, they had this, that was a target where they had to slide a penny. Then they did ring calls, they played basketball, they played jock chinga, so much fun. And at the end of the year, it's so hard to keep them entertained anyways. Again, it's, you can't get them to join them. Not with all of them, and then- This is just another, but I think this one's about one range.
Halloween was really helping me get ready to come back to state tests, things in a very good way, so thank you, Mr. Janey.
Glow games really helped me get my math, and it really helped me in my state test, so they pleased me.
We have the whole hospital set up, it made math fun and easier to have for staff, so thank you, Mr. Gray.
I really believe this doesn't don't study it.
So when I get asked about this, why do I do it? Wasn't it a lot of work? Was it a lot of work? Tons and tons of work. Tons of work on the front end, but it's ready for the next year. Was it worth it? Absolutely. Well, look at all those kids' faces, it makes me so happy, makes my teacher heart so cool. So always worth it, and will I do it again? Absolutely, 100%, I'm looking for more to do later. That is what we do at the Center for, we make time for what it's like, so. Thank you, guys, for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Janey, great presentation and great job at Southern Central Middle School. Mr. Williams, keep up the great work out there, we appreciate all of your hard work. And federal progress team, Mr. Case, Coach Clark, everybody who's been here, that we appreciate all that y'all do. Y'all would like to go, now would be a good time to exit, because we're getting on to the rest of the business, but you're always welcome to stay. Ms. Janey, thank you again.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Madam President.
Attorney's report. Do you repeat?
Yes, ma'am, we have two, three things that we need to discuss in executive session. One is a property contract matter, this is another contract matter than a real estate matter, so three things altogether we'll need to discuss in executive session.
All right, consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I just ran over. Approval of a minutes for September the 2nd, 2021, do I have a motion to approve? I make that motion? Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, now the consent agenda. Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to that effect?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, new visits. Comprehensive reading and math instructional support program, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. We had, we put out a request for proposal that obviously realized it, 20th for reading in math. District, my recommendation except for lowest investment for written instruction.
Thank you. Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the lowest investment with comprehensive reading and math instructional support program, ingredients associations.
All right, do we have any questions for? Yes, sir? You have a question? Okay. So, okay, you may, I have a motion from you, okay? Second? Second. Am I all in favor? Aye. All right. Mr. Williams, consulting services for SY 2021, 2022.
Yes, ma'am. Well, RFPs were opened up on June 28th for education. Consultation services for leadership coaching for vendors, professional coaching for teachers, and instructional support for students. My recommendation except for lowest investment gives first education access.
Thank you. Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the bid for kids first for consultation services.
Do I have a motion?
A move.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Thank you. All right. Genitorial cleaning and paper supplies, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. Bid was open on September 28th for the purchase of glow jam for cleaning paper supplies. Due to the continued issue with supply chain and availability of some products, we determined to award a winner for each item and have an alternative winner. My recommendation is to accept the best moves as listed on your updated bid winner tabulation sheet in your pack.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve lowest investment listed in the packet of genitorial cleaning and paper supplies.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to that effect? Thank you. Do I have a second? Aye. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Thank you. Promised time clocks, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. We opened up bids on September 24th for the purchase of promos time clocks. My recommendation except for lowest investment from ultimate promos group.
Thank you. Your recommendations, Alston?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the bid for the promos time clocks from ultimate promos.
Second? Second. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Thank you. Bids for playground equipment, center hill elementary, and Elbow Hill Elementary, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. We opened up bids on the 14th of September, Center Hill and Elbow Hill Playground Equipment. And two vendors submit bids, my recommendation except for low bid from Barnes and Brower.
Thank you. Mr. Alston, your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the bid with Barnes and Brower for playground equipment, Center Hill Elementary School, Promos Hill.
Do I have a motion for this recommendation?
A move.
Second? Second.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I have a motion, can I make a second through the show? Okay. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Thank you. Mr. Williams, you're still up there.
I'm ready.
Request for work groups compensation insurance renewal, Mr. Williams.
I think this gets half.
Yeah? Oh, sorry. Honestly, we graduated from high school in college. Okay, contractual agreements?
Yes, ma'am. We're requesting permission from the board to have a contractual agreement, Barnes and Brower, Promos Hill Playground.
Okay. Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Barnes and Brower, playground equipment at Center Hill Elementary School, Promos Hill.
Do I have a motion to this effect? I make that motion? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Now, gee, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Is that correct?
Okay.
Is your pay renewal form from Mississippi, compensation group, this is the third year renewal, our guarantee rate, which is extremely competitive rate, asking the board to approve the rate, understand the policy for the compensation, worker compensation insurance that were run from my company card this September 30th, 2022.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the workman's compensation insurance renewal.
Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. Request to pay vendor purchasing rule issued Lake Howard Elementary, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. The fact is, the letter from the principal of Lake Howard Elementary explains that they gifted classmen on field trip that require a fee prior to obtaining a purchase order to issue that has been sufficiently addressed at the school level, and the school is asking permission from the board to pay, let's hear our sample picture from the school that hit us.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the request to pay the vendor personal issue Lake Howard Elementary School.
Do I have a motion to, or his recommendation?
Make that motion.
Okay, I have two recommendations, I mean, two motions.
I can make a motion here.
I need a second. All in favor of this, say aye? Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Gray, coming up, I want to also thank first, you've always called every audit. Over there, anytime a word audit comes up here, we have one, it's great, it's always called. Want to thank you too, Miss Fish.
All right, Ms. Gray, sorry, you just fired that. Okay. Statement of revenue and expenditures, August 28th, 21st, from August 2021. Ms. Gray, sorry, I'm pretty neat.
Our revenue collection through August for all general funds is $43,953,13. We are up 13% over last year. Last year, we were at $30,884, and our increase is mainly due to the MAP at Bellorm, which is increased each year. Our revenues for all funds are at $38,783,147. We're up 24% over last year. We did additional MAP at Bellorm, and also just, that depends on the timing of our federal reimbursement, so it's just subject to whatever we make for this. Our general fund expenditures through August are at $27,677,05 compared to last year at $25,922,028. We are up 7% over FY21, but that's only about a $1.7 million difference at this time of year, because August is only our second month, so that's actually well below budget expenditures for this time period. And August is first month for teacher payroll, so that's an increase through July.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of revenue and expenditures for August, 2021.
Do I have a motion for this?
A move.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. Statement of cash flow for August 20, Miss Graves.
Our district maintenance cash balance at the end of August is at $116,435,198. Of that, we have an invested balance of $29,897,886, which is consistent. All funds cash balance are at $133,396,341.
Thank you. Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow for August 2021.
Do I have a motion?
A move.
A second? Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Ms. Graves, combined balance sheet, please.
Our favorite report, the fund balance sum for all general funds for August is at $125,149,137, which is 14% higher than FY21. Last year, we were at $193,399,23. And again, as it was last month, it's pretty much accumulation of our fund balance from FY21. Our all funds cash balance is at $149,181,671. So for all fund balances, our general fund makes up about 80% of our budget.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for August 2021.
Do I have a motion for this?
A move.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. Thank you. Certification of bank rate conciliations, June, July, August, 2021, Miss Graves.
All make statements, have a record file with no exceptions. We'll note, notice that you had two additional reports. So at doing closing entries for the year, we just simply just restated the June, July reports. We still have a little bit closing out left to do, but they just changed them, so we just want to go ahead and just restate those. But everything is still being ranked, it's just the three funds, like nothing changed.
That sounds great.
We don't play these for, for the current number, best year.
We have done very well.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the certification of bank rate conciliations from June, July, and August 2021.
Do I have a motion? Is- A move. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Ms. Alexander. Guys, board, talk to DJCD, guidelines for time and attendance.
Yes, ma'am. Let's present the board just to add additional special, special period leave of eight hours if we get a teacher. This change would allow us to give occupational therapists and nurses, certain who are hard and maybe in their required licenses, to allow them to receive PDA eight hours per year, this special period leave, this is decided by, approved by the principal.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the revised policy, DJCD, guidelines for time and attendance.
Do I have that a motion, please? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. Personnel, Mr. Allen Fadner.
Yes, ma'am. Personal package, this afternoon, we have papers with due by recommendations, taking six through nine are personal changes. You have an additional handout, I understand that includes an additional resignation that would be included, that would be included, personal changes. Page 10, this has been most of myself, all in points of not the word of the city educator license, we paid with a non-licensed provisional pay. And those we have to, that we received since the stimulus created. Page 11, this has been open to the Stratton High School, professional group of re-employed workers, an actress and tutor, due to the version of that call, which is pretty important list. Page 12, this has been open to myself, on the 21, 22, pay scale revision for school plus drivers and school plus aides, this will be effective beginning, 10, I can agree, 10, 3. Page 13 is the transportation pay scale. Page 40, the question is, the pay for casino, regular federal programs on the new board will be an actress and tutor, South Haven High School for students who need extra academic support, who work a total of 600 hours, $27 per hour, getting 10, 8, and ending 6, 30, 22. Page 15 is the question traditional pay for receiving their own teachers from Portland High School, who are potentially tutors for special education students who need extra academic support, their hours, 02,000, 30, 40 hours, the greatest $27 an hour, beginning 10, 7, and 6, 30, 22. Page 16 is a list of those teachers. Page 17 is a request traditional pay for casino, on the new board, Portland High School, who will be an actress and tutor, who will be needing extra academic support, work a total of 650 hours, between $27 per hour, getting 10, 7, and ending 6, 30, 22. And then page, page 18, we did not see the traditional pay for script, registered secondary education teachers who work eight hours to finalize Module Two of the LA curriculum, beginning 10, 8, and ending on 10, 5. Registered secondary education teachers who were eight hours of finalized module two of the LA curriculum, beginning 10, 8, and ending on the 10, 15.
Thank you. Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve personnel, ask personnel.
Do I have a motion for this? I make that motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Residency appeals, Mr. Paul.
Yes, ma'am. That line is being discussed in the second session.
Student discipline, Mr. Bailey.
Madam Chair, do you have a special discussion in session?
All right, thank you. What comments, Mr. Austin?
Yes, ma'am. I have received the sign-in sheets for today's board meeting. Per attendance, no one signed up.
This time I need a motion for consideration of closed session. Um, um. Okay. Do I have, I have two people that request to appear for, this is, I don't know, AB, is AB here? For mask mandate? What about ME for re-infringing school? We're not here? Okay. Okay, now I need a motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should enter executive session for the following matters. Student matter regarding early graduation, residency appeal, student discipline, request to appear, property contract, contract matter and real estate. I make that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Chase will come back and inform you whether we say an extended session or not. And we said maybe it's getting for October 21st, 2021, at 10:00 AM. We did this.